All right, this time I would like to call the meeting to order. Could everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
I would like to thank everybody for coming and being patient so we can move down to this location, make it feel more comfortable. We will begin our meeting by approving the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Pam, second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor? All right, we will move on to public comment. At this time, we will entertain public comment. This meeting is held in public according to the open meetings law. It is not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value input from the public. When we start, please come to the table and state your name and address for the board's clerk's record. We'll just use the mutt either mic when you come up. If you just want to raise your hand if you want to talk, I'll call somebody and have you come up so everybody's just not trying to jump up. Okay? We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less so we can give opportunities for everybody to speak that wants to, and we appreciate your comments. So is there any, at this time, is there any community members that would like to speak?
My name is Ben Stopka. I live at 4870 Tiffany Road. So I'm here to address the focus group and offer a thank you. I had the opportunity to sit on that group last Saturday. And I was, I went into that with that opportunity thinking that I had an open mind. And I have to say unequivocally that the people that I had the opportunity to sit with there in that focus group were positive, they were agentic, illustrating a growth mindset. And I had a serious concern as I left, and I've had a few days to reflect on it. And I think the best way for me to sum it up is to say that I appreciate the district's focus on efficiency. I think as a taxpayer in the district, having two children enrolled in Wayne myself, that makes logical sense financially. But as an educator, I left there feeling that the focus was on efficiency over efficacy. And while I appreciate the fact that the district was asking questions that I think are positive, at the end of the day, none of the things that we discussed in that focus group focused on teaching and learning in this district. None of the conversations that we had focused on programming or opportunities for all of our kids. And I left troubled by that for a couple of reasons. I think that an efficiency-based model gives us an opportunity, in business, let's say, to mass produce quantities of things that are very cheap. All right, it's the Walmart effect. Efficiency leads to value decrease. Okay? The efficacy of our education system, I believe, is much more important. We all moved to this district because it offered a chance for a world-class education for our kids. And I left troubled, thinking that the plan, as it was laid out by Paul and the rest of them, focused on data that was quantifiable. They looked at square footages of rooms, they divided it by pupils, and they made comments like, "This room over here has nineteen students, and this room over here has sixteen. So therefore, this teacher and these students are not reaching capacity." I was offended. I was offended that someone could stand in front of me and offer a qualitative judgment about the teaching and learning of a classroom by dividing the square footage of the room by the number of pupils inside of it. And I think if we were to apply that logic back again to business, right, when a business fails, people lose money. Money can be replaced. If this district moves forward with a plan to close two schools and focuses strictly on efficiency over efficacy, I feel like the safety, the welfare, and the future opportunities of my children and children of everybody else standing here are being jeopardized. And I wanted to step forward tonight and say that, that I'm listening intently. I left there with a positive feeling because all the constituencies that were represented shared a common thought: how do we make this district the best? I just wanted to go on record to say, I really hope that their conversation shifts from efficiency to efficacy. At the bottom, the end of the day, that's what every person in this room wants, is for our children to have the opportunity to succeed. And just like it would be absolutely absurd for a teacher to think that there's a one-size-fits-all method of instruction, there's not a one-space-fits-all model, regardless of what quantifiable data gives us. There's a reason that some classrooms have nineteen and some classrooms have sixteen. And if I, as a teacher, went forward and I taught my classes with a one-size-fits-all model, I'd think of myself as being unethical, and I would be run out. All right, so it was important for me to just make sure that this was known, that the problem, as I see it, is not the fact that we're looking at methods to save money or efficiency. There's a lot of unanswered questions with that, but that's not my real issue. My real issue is the focus is not the kids of this district. And I wanted to go on record to say that. So thank you for your time.
I also live at 4870 Tiffany Road, and I also have two children in the district. I have a two-part comment that I would like to make. The original purpose of the efficiency study was to close the deficit that would be incurred with the impending closing of Gannay Power Plant and the lost revenue of shared sales tax money from the county. Now that neither of those are concerned at the moment, what is the district going to do with the money that is saved from closing one or two schools? In addition, I know in the pilot agreement with Gannay, we will be losing approximately $600,000 a year. However, the district is currently saving $1.5 million every year due to the downsizing of staff through attrition. This puts us ahead of what we are losing with, from Gannay. I would like to see a plan on what the district plans on doing with that money that's being saved. Thank you.
I live at 363 Jacobs Road. I want to start by thanking the board for their service to the community and for representing the community they elected them. I am here tonight not as a staff member, but as a parent of children who may one day attend Wayne Central and as a community member. I feel as though I need to express my thoughts regarding the possibility of closing one or more schools, as I believe that it's important for the board to hear from as many community members as possible in order to make the best decision for our students and our community. After reading over the numerous documents presented to the community through the stages of the efficiency study, I feel that the plan to close one building could somewhat happen. But I feel that drastically downsizing to three buildings, although it would provide larger savings, would not be best for our students and would lead to two things: larger class sizes and lost opportunities for students. Two characteristics that make most of us in this room want to live and bring our kids to this school. Our community supports education and our school district, and as a community member, I would be willing to pay to ensure that our students will continue to get small class sizes and educational opportunities that we currently have. I fear that by closing one or more buildings, we put ourselves in a predicament should enrollment increase and we need to reopen a building in the future. As multiple of our efficiency studies have shown, a fear and a concern written right in the reports says that unused or dormant schools will turn into mothball buildings or rock targets, and that the district will need to include a plan to demolish these buildings, if not occupied within three to five years, thus adding costs to the district years down the road, should we either need to demolish the buildings or bring them back for student use. Lastly, I would encourage the board to bring back a previous practice that was done years ago, the Saturday morning coffee with the school board. I think that style, open forum, before making any final decisions, would be a good opportunity where the board can sit in a less formal environment and speak with any community member who would like to speak with them. My final thought is, cost-cutting may look good on paper, but our business is students, not products. Therefore, cost-saving won't always benefit a school. Thank you.
My name's Joe Veronic. I'm at 3504 Viewpoint Drive. I have three kids, one who just went into kindergarten, the other two will be going to Wayne Central. I'm not a person who has been involved in school board issues, but in speaking to neighbors, friends, and others in the community, I'm very concerned about what you all will be voting on soon. I'm especially concerned because what I feel is the most extreme and drastic option that shuts down two of our kids' schools seems to still be a serious possibility. The closing of one school is a tragic loss to both our community and our young children, but the thought of closing two primary schools and cramming the entire school district into a couple of buildings, I think, is heartless. I think it would be wrong, and I don't think I'm overstating it, to say I think it would be unethical. This issue is mobilizing the many families in my neighborhood to pay attention and to get involved. I just simply ask you, as the board members, to consider how families that currently have young children in this district, as well as families who will consider coming here in the future, will respond to the closing of two primary slash elementary schools. I ask you to consider how such an action would exacerbate in our already declining enrollment. I understand the desire to control costs and to budget wisely, but taking the most extreme and drastic position on this, especially in light of the fact that Gannay is not closing, would be a unnecessary and, I think, highly unpopular decision that will surely lead to a more serious problem with enrollment in the future. That's what I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
My name is Lisa Marino. I reside at 363 Jacobs Road. I come to you tonight as a resident and parent of potentially two future Wayne Central students. I want to start off by thanking the board for their dedication, for their time and support that they have given to the Wayne Central community. So thank you. I am not sure if you know how much appreciation there is for your service, so again, thank you. Recently, you were tasked with the responsibility of opening our school to undergo an efficiency study to determine if our schools are effectively using our resources. Through the study, the district was presented with five options that could possibly make our district more efficient. The district asked for input from a community focus group. That consisted of a diverse grouping of individual community stakeholders. I was not able to participate in this process, but would like my input to be heard. I believe that there needs to be a balance between being financially responsible and meeting the requests of the taxpayers. That being said, I concur with the community focus group and believe that option A or D is an acceptable balance that would be best for the Wayne Central students and community. Sometimes you just can't put a price on education.
Hi, I'm Nicole Odell, and I live at 385 Highfield Drive. I am here not just to represent my own family, but many other families in our community, but I am also here to represent those who can't speak for themselves tonight if we choose to close two schools. I am here to represent the seventh grade girl who may find herself in a seventeen-year-old boy's car in our high school parking lot and find she's in a situation far over her head. In a situation far over her head but has no way out. I am here representing the eighth grade little boy who is too scared to go to school anymore because he is being severely bullied by seniors who think they rule the school. You can't sit here today telling yourself that this isn't going to happen. It will and already does with our twelfth, our ninth through twelve students. And now we want to throw seventh and eighth graders in the mix. I am also here to represent the parent who finds themselves dealing with drug and alcohol abuse issues at startling young ages because these kids have had access to things that they may have not, they may not have had they have been going to a different school. We have a drug and alcohol abuse counselor in the high school for a reason, because there's clearly a need. Has anyone asked her what she thinks about each scenario and what would be best for our students? I am also here to represent the educators who already work so hard to establish close-knit relationships with each child in their class, but will soon find themselves with too many kids and not enough time to really get to know that little Jacob who didn't have enough food in his cupboards for dinner last night. I am here to represent us, a community that bands together and fights for what is right. I am also for the small classrooms and opposed to closing two schools, but more than that, I am for the protection of our children. I have read and heard a whole lot about money in regards to the study, but as a mom, my children are not dollar signs. I have done a ton of research with this whole process, and I have heard our leaders speak more about saving money than I have about saving our students' education. It is our job and your job to provide the best possible education to our children, and I think we all know that will not happen with option E, regardless of the amount of money it will save. Lastly, since money seems to be the main push here, what is the school even going to do with the savings from the closings of the two schools, or one, for that matter? I feel this information would be, should be in writing and in detail for, detailed for all of our community members to see before any decisions are made. Thank you for your time.
I live at 498 Ridge Road in Ontario. I'm going to come from a totally different perspective from everyone in the audience, and I can respect everyone's, where you're coming from, some have kids not in school yet, some have kids in school yet. I happen to have a second grader, and I also have one who graduated two years ago. We have phenomenal teachers and administrators in this district. I have been the gamut. I have kids who are very bright. I have kids who are in AIS for reading. I have kids who have, need extra help, so they're in a blended classroom. I have been the gamut. I don't see this process as not getting community involvement. I don't, I've spoken with different members of the board. I don't see it as total money savings. Yes, money's a big deal. It's expensive. Living in Ontario, our school taxes, they're fairly cheap compared to taxes, school taxes in other areas in this county. Other areas in this county, I think we may be the only district, I could be wrong on that, does not house UPK in district, nor bus it here. That's a disadvantage. Other schools have that, we don't. If it was in the district, in the schools, it would give the kids maybe a leg up when they go into kindergarten, maybe not. Saving some classroom space to afford that would be fantastic. As far as people, I've heard a lot of banter lately about now, no opportunities if we go down to different school structures, the kids won't have it. It's been my understanding, reading, talking, going to the meetings, talking to, asking questions of the people who did the study, that the district is trying to maintain all of the AP classes. And I understand if you don't have children in high school yet, that you may not, that may not be an issue. Gemini classes, huge deal. My kid went in a whole semester ahead. IB classes, I wasn't part of that program, but I hear it's great. Our school affords all three of those. Not something you can get most places. When people ask about tax savings, I'm interested in knowing, I'm not interested in saving money on my taxes. I'm interested in maintaining my tax bill and the opportunities. And if the board can do that with restructuring, maybe having, one of my daughter's classes last night had fourteen kids in it. She's in sixth grade. I am not a teacher. I have no idea if that's a reasonable number of kids to have, or if it's not a reasonable number. That's not a question I can answer. That would be a question for the board. When I was at the meetings, the focus was twenty-three, between twenty and twenty-five kids is what I remember hearing, that's the class size we're going for. I've seen people say, "No, we're going to have thirty, forty kids in the class." I don't believe that our board here, who has kids in the district, who has kids out of the district, not even in school yet, is going to go that route. Correct me if I am wrong, and I know you can't answer me tonight, but that doesn't seem like something that our board is going to do. So I think it sounds like a lot of everything is dollars, 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 but I see it more as, yeah, we're trying to save on this end so we can still offer on this end. Thank you.
I'm Thea Sinclair. I reside at 363 Parsons Acres. I want to thank the board for all that you're doing for the community. I didn't grow up in Wayne. I grew up in Williamson, and I picked Wayne for a reason. You know, the school system was always great growing up. We always heard about how great the Wayne schools were. I was excited when we were able to move here. I now have three young children, second grade, kindergarten, and a three-year-old. And I have some concerns about, not necessarily what's being done, I'm very appreciative of what's being done. I've read the data. I think changes can be made, and I think our district can be better for it. But I am concerned about a lack of knowledge in the community. Whenever I'm discussing with moms at schools or my pre-K, when I take my daughter to preschool, it seems that so many people are unaware. I actually found out from my grandmother, who lives in Williamson, from an article that was in the Wayne County Times. And that's when I got myself involved in getting information. So my main concern is that I feel like we're making a rushed decision. I really, wholeheartedly believe that the board is trying to do the best thing for the community, but I would ask you to take more time. I think we need to move out the timeline. I think since we found out that there has been an extension with the power plant, and that's not an urgent requirement to make this decision, I think there's some time to better inform the community. I think that some of the things, you know, as someone who just is new to the district and has young children, I am informed basically 100% until recently by what comes home in my kids' folders. You know, if you could send out that information, flyers in those folders, like the PTO does, any information, I mean, I probably recycled forty papers today, thank God I recycled, from my kids' folders from the past week. But that's how I'm informed, and I feel like our community needs to really, really be informed. I applied for the focus group. I wasn't chosen, and then I found out that there are only fifty people that applied, and I think that reason is because people are not aware of what's going on in the community. I really, genuinely feel they should be part of the decision, and I ask you to consider taking a town vote as to what changes are made after you really do a full due diligence of making sure that the community is fully aware. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Anyone else? You're next, sir. You'll be next.
Hello, I'm Shelley Frank. Can you guys hear me? Shelley Frank, 361 Highfield Drive. Excuse me, I'm super nervous. Thank you to the board and Dr. Calvin for allowing us the chance to speak. I'm a Wayne Central School District mother of four, half kids. I have a sixth grader, a fourth grader, a first grader, and a pre-K student. My oldest son started school over here, OP, when we lived on Ridge Road in Ontario. And OP is where we fell in love with Wayne. I was terrified to send my kiddo off to school, but I was quickly reassured and amazed at the fantastic staff and teachers that surrounded my son each day. When it came time to move our growing family, the one thing we didn't want to compromise on was our school district. We had to stay in Wayne. We found our home on the very farthest borders of the district, right on the Penfield line. I was nervous to switch schools, but so thankful that we were still in the district. I again fell completely in love with our school at Freewill. It is then that I realized a huge factor in what makes Wayne Central such a successful, family-focused, safe place for our kids to thrive. We are one district with two amazing communities. These small families, these small school families have allowed Wayne to serve both ends of our district with excellence, as well as be staples in both the communities of Walworth and Ontario. We are blessed with teachers who are not only highly qualified to educate our kids, but also go far above and beyond the call. On a personal level, I can tell you how much growth my fourth grade daughter has had. And I would welcome a conversation with anyone from the board or Dr. Calvin, so I can highlight the difference our small schools and classrooms have had in her life specifically. She's been allowed to thrive and be comfortable in her learning environment because of the people around her, the consistency with staff, and the fact that she has been able to have adequate space and attention from them over the past three years. I can say with confidence, she would not have had as much growth if there were more students crammed into a classroom and less staff to serve them, which I fear is what would happen if we went from five schools down to three. While I would love for everything to remain the same for both of our small school communities, I understand something needs to give. However, I believe closing two of our schools will leave us in a place where we are no longer able to support children academically, in athletics, music, and arts, and in special support services, the way that we have become accustomed to doing. This kind of support is vital to the growth, not only of our students, but of our community as a whole. My hope is that Wayne Central remains a district where people stay. I've met a number of families over the past few weeks who have been here for generations and are now raising their own kids and grandkids here in Wayne Central. I beg you to allow our district to maintain its integrity, reputation for excellence, and remain a desirable district to live in. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Ross McGuire. I live at 4836 Lincoln Road. I have two children in Wayne schools. My oldest is here at TC Armstrong, or, excuse me, over at TC Armstrong. My younger's at Freewill. I, I would say first, it's sometimes almost painful to me, as a, as a city school teacher, to note the differences in the quality of education that my children at home receive and that the children that I work with at school. There are so many dedicated professionals that I work with in the urban environment, but the resources, the facilities, the services, the opportunities that my children enjoy is a matter of course. Again, it's, it's kind of a painful split screen to come to a community event involved at the school and see the incredible level of parent participation, and again, to see the, the quality of education that's, that's just the baseline for what I see at, at Freewill and at Armstrong, and, and what I've seen incidentally at the, the other schools that are part of our school system. We moved here really because of proximity to relatives and, and the beauty of the area, and had no idea how wonderful the schools were. But I'm constantly staggered, again, by the quality of, of my children's education, the depth and breadth of their learning, the, the education of the whole child, and again, the participation of an entire community in, in their education. I would very strongly urge the board to think about scale as an incredibly important factor, and, and having experience at, at many different city schools, many different kinds of environments within that setting. The most successful schools I've, I've been in have been small, have been just a couple of classrooms at each grade band, and have allowed a family-community atmosphere to thrive within that setting. The large schools that I've been at have tended to be impersonal, lead to kind of a feeling of anonymity and disconnection between students, staff, and community. And that's, that's the opposite of what I want to see for, for my youngest, who's now in pre-K, and I'm, I'm very much hoping to see him be a Freewill student. Even more, I, I would like to frame the conversation as, not as thinking about business losses, but business opportunities, and thinking of education as the most important investment that the community could make in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Vanderlander. I live at 6171 Furnace Road. I wasn't planning on speaking because I just found out about this meeting last night. I don't have a kid in the school district yet. She's three. I didn't know anything about this. I heard it through a Facebook group yesterday. I recently moved here in April, and the primary reason we moved here is for the school district. We've We've heard nothing but good things about it. And I'm just kind of concerned at how hush-hush it is from an outsider's perspective. I know a lot of these people have kids currently in the district and, you know, they probably have a better pulse on what's going on within the district. But I think of when the Village of Massadan dissolved. That was all over the news. I'd never even lived in Massadan, but I knew that was happening because it was a big deal. And I think this drastic restructuring of our school district is an even bigger deal than that because it affects more people and the future lives of our kids. So, I just, I think that, I don't know a lot of the details as to what's been talked about other than closing schools, so I can't really opinionate from that perspective. But I think it should be made more public so that, you know, even people from outside the school district but live in the community can be aware and involved as well because their taxpayer dollars are going towards the district and, you know, our kids are going to affect our life, you know, in the future. So, thanks.
Hi, I'm Ray Jagoda. I live at 1413 Honeysuckle Trail. And I just want to simply state that I am against closing two schools. I don't feel that the 7-12 model is appropriate for my daughter. She's in third grade currently. I want my daughter to have an opportunity to be a kid as long as she possibly can and I want her to be able to thrive in a middle school setting. And unfortunately, I don't believe that's possible in a 7-12 situation. So, if that were to happen and come to fruition, I would have no choice but to consider pulling my daughter from the district. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John McGurk. I reside at 3745 Walworth, Ontario Road. I have three kids, two of which go to Freewill. I have a second grader and a first grader and I have a three-year-old son. And I would, I couldn't look them in the eye if I didn't get up and speak to the board tonight when I got home or look my wife in the eye. Just a little bit about me, I'm a Fairport teacher. I grew up in Fairport. My wife's from the country, so we moved out here. I was completely against it. I didn't know anything about the school district at the time. Call me a spoiled Fairport kid or whatever, but that's what I did. We moved here. Raising our kids out here has become very important to me. I love what I see at Freewill and I'm very concerned about the way this whole process has come about. Being a teacher and looking at my kids, it's not about what's best for my wallet. It's about what's best for the kids. And sometimes I gotta suck it up. And I think as taxpayers, sometimes we need to suck it up and do what's best for our kids. I'm concerned about the way things have been communicated. I've heard that from a number of people. And I'm here to advocate for my three kids who can't advocate for themselves as well as all these people's kids. The decisions that you're going to make are going to affect my kids for the rest of their life and all of these people's kids for the rest of their lives. I've heard some other people talk about the emotional and social effects of some of the changes in some of these options. I have a daughter who cried every day going to kindergarten. And if I have to uproot her and move her to another building, that's gonna, it's gonna be bad. And that's just selfishly. And I'm sure other people have those selfish interests as well. I have a huge concern being in education of placing a seventh grader in a high school building with all the things that go on in a high school building. I coach lacrosse. I know what's said in a high school locker room. And I know that the district will do their best to separate seniors from seventh graders. I work in a school. Unless you put bars up, they're not going to be separated. We also have a very large district and I'm concerned about transportation. The time that my student is going to lose on the bus every day getting carted to and from school is time that they can be spending on their academics or on extracurricular activities or anything else. I think it would be wrong to close two buildings and put these kids possibly on buses for a little bit longer. Last is class size. And I just want to reiterate a comment that stuck from someone else who spoke earlier. You know, I'm insulted as an educator that we hire an outside group that comes in that has no clue about education and we're going to base our decisions solely off what they say. It's not about square footage. It's not about square footage. It's about what's best for our kids. Class size is huge. I teach in a big district. I watch classes of 25 students. And I know that when we have class sizes that are smaller, our kids do better. I, myself, I'm willing to suck up a tax increase because I want what's best for all our kids. I want opportunity. Don't rob our kids' opportunity. I digress.
John Dexter, 6112 LeFrank Drive. I have two girls that go to Wayne Central Schools and I just want to say, they love the experience. I think their teachers do an excellent job. And I'm here tonight because we're concerned about maintaining that level of excellence in the district. And I think every parent here came tonight to make sure that was maintained. I can tell you where I am personally, my wife and a lot of our friends and other members or other parents in our school are adamantly against closing the two schools and we're adamantly against having a 7 through 12 school. I think on behalf of the board, it'd be a reckless decision. And just to reiterate another point about the study that was done. King &amp; King is an architecture firm and I just hope the board... You know, I work in the construction industry for General Contract. I work with architects all the time. I find it kind of troubling that King &amp; King, who's an architecture firm, and their business model is to get paid by school districts to put out documents and drawings for school renovation, they are the ones who are responsible for the study in Wayne Central School. So, I just hope that that was taken into consideration and it was, it'll be a fair process that King &amp; King weren't all of a sudden roll in here and, oh, now we're going to start doing some documents for some renovations of these schools because now we all of a sudden pushed this to the board and they accepted it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Aiman, 1154 Lake Road. Just a lot of the points that have been made by everyone else were things that have gone through my head and my family's head. Just to start, I went to Wayne Central. My son graduated. I have a daughter in the elementary school this year and a daughter in the primary school this year. Got a wide spectrum. My kids are 23 down to four years old. So, in any case, a lot of the things that these nice people have talked about is the family structure that you have in the schools. I gotta admit, that's one of the best things about this district. When me and my wife got married and when we got together, that's why we moved back out to this area. After I graduated from Wayne, I traveled quite a bit around the United States. I'd been in construction for 30 years. I actually built this auditorium. I did all the construction on these projects back in 98 when all the additions went on to Freewill. I worked at all these schools. In any case, that's kind of a big, a big, yeah, I'm getting a little lost here, sorry. A lot of things going on in my head. But that was a big reason in our hearts why we came back and why we wanted to bring our kids to this school. And my son graduating from the school, he came from Webster where he had a lot of issues. We brought him out to Wayne. He flourished. He did great. The teachers were great. They were able to help him through the middle school and through high school and right out the door into college. And, you know, obviously the children are one of our, that's the biggest concern, making sure that their education is going to be, you know, balanced out with obviously budgets and things of that nature. And it seems like this is kind of a harsh, quick judgment call that's going on as far as wanting to close the schools. When I first moved out here, I started at Freewill, came through middle school into the high school. And one of the other biggest issues that we're going to run into is not that just hearing from some parents that say they want to leave, but we've got a lot of good teaching staff that we don't need to lose and the problem is we're not going to be able to replace these teachers. Will we downsize? As I said, I've been in this area for over 30 years now. And when I was a kid, there wasn't any housing project, or housing projects, I'm sorry, cul-de-sacs like on Lincoln Road and Centennial Village, all these new cul-de-sacs that have popped up and the population that has grown out in this area. I understand that we have to save some money here and there. We have to, you know, straighten out what unfortunately the last administration left the mess for people to clean up. But in any case, a lot of the, a lot of the community is still healing, I think, from that whole mess and what we went through with that. But to come back now and obviously we have to do something with the schools. OE is suffering. It's an old school, obviously. Something needs to be done. But instead of closing the two schools and possibly bringing everyone to the middle school, the high school, spending millions on renovations and additions, maybe there's other options. Why can't something be done, say with that area with OE, OP and Freewill's closed and still keep the elementary and primary children where they need to be away from the older kids? I've got two daughters coming up through the schools and I don't want my kids running around where... I mean, I said, when I went to the middle school, I can tell you where I was every morning when I got off the bus. Wasn't at the middle school. Was over here at the high school with all my big friends and my older sisters and brothers' friends and getting into trouble and probably doing things I shouldn't have been doing. But an intermingling of children that young, I couldn't, I couldn't look my eight-year-old in the eye as she goes out to the door to go to Ontario Elementary, the third grade and know she's going to be in class with possibly eighth or ninth graders or in the same building in school. And as most of the other people mentioned, it's hard to separate things like that. It's hard to keep the kids away from each other, keep them where they're not supposed to be or away from where they're not supposed to be and where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there. And downsizing on staff and things of that nature, it just seems like everyone's going to suffer. And the bottom line is it boils down to the children are going to suffer most. And, you know, I know, as most everyone else said as well, taxes aren't the issue. I know our taxes went up. Our school taxes went up exponentially this year. They went up quite a bit. So, I'm not here to complain about that, but if we're raising taxes and then consolidating, I don't understand where all, you know, the money's going. I understand that there's issues with Gne. Gne's not, whether they've got another contract and they're going to be here for another 10, 12 years. You know, either way, we're not going to get money from them all the time. So, it just boils down to the teachers and the children. We need to make sure everyone's here together and keep everyone we have. Thank you.
All right, this time, is there any board members, board members who'd like to make any comments, please?
Well, if I can get electronics to cooperate, the answer is yes. There is a board member that would like to say something. I apologize. I'm a little disorganized besides the discombobulation of moving. I have been home for about three minutes from vacation, so I apologize. I will start by saying that both Tim and I were able to attend the New York School Board Association Leadership Training last week. And during that, we spent a lot of time going over training. You know, it was like in-service training for the board members. And one of the things that struck me was regarding our board and how the board, and I apologize, I don't remember the school district, painted posts. They did a presentation on what their board had gone through. And as some of the board members that have been around for a little while know, we've been through quite a bit ourselves. I was impressed with how they handled it and some of the outside consultations they had and with all the in-services that we had over the past, I would say at least four years for me and Tim. A lot of the training, the in-service training as a board that we've gotten was mirrored by the successes that they had for kind of pulling themselves out of a rut. Not only as a board did they have some internal issues, but as a district and a community, they also were dealing with some things. And I was encouraged to see that their testimony of what they had gone through mirrored a lot of what the board and our community had already gone through previously. So, and where we are now is in a much better place as it was with them. So, I wanted to just let the board know that Tim and I both went. We spent a lot, we spent a whole day there doing training. But it is refreshing to see that a board that had gone through what we did and did some similar exercises in development ended up in a good spot like we were as well. I think I'm going to save these comments for later since I can't seem to get my notes to pop up. So, I guess we'll just move on.
Now, after that, does anybody else have anything? All right, now we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Calvin?
Good evening, board and community. A couple of things we'd like to highlight tonight. First, we want to start out with how things are going in our schools. Things appear to be going extremely well. We've had a very successful and a really fun, exciting homecoming weekend. Lots of people out at all of our activities, interacting with our students and as a community. Things just going and went very well with homecoming. Couple of student highlights today. Students at Ontario Elementary celebrated their character a day. The entire school was out and about and really stressing the need for strong student character. So, kids just really doing well with the entire community, parents, lots of folks at Ontario Elementary today. Other student highlights at the primary school. Students also participated in their annual cross-country fun run. I'm not sure how many were down near Ridge Road this past week, but boy, there were people from all over there supporting kids. And what a great opportunity, a way for our students to really highlight what they've been learning in physical education and our teachers to really, they were there supporting our kids and doing a really great job. The middle school, we are implementing some additional ongoing progress monitoring measures for ELA and math this year. And really, the goal is to continue to track how students are doing. Those students who need additional supports, we'd like to be able to provide those supports as quick as possible. And so, we are implementing those tools this year. And again, our goal is to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids. As you know, we have a district goal that we want to make sure that all students are successful. And so, using ongoing tracking or ongoing measuring, excuse me, monitoring measures to track progress is a way that we can certainly accomplish that goal. The elementary schools are also implementing new instructional benchmark assessments. And what those assessments will do for us, board, is help us to be able to monitor how kids are doing as well throughout the year, our elementary students. Over the summer, Joe and the PDT team and a number of other teachers and principals all got together and continued to look at, continuously looked at our assessments and how we are progressing and how we want to progress with regard to our students. They did some tweaks and some revisions to those assessments. And then this year, we've put them into place. So, we are watching how kids are doing and responding again as quickly as we possibly can. The goal is really to track student performance throughout the year and to make sure that our kids are really receiving everything that they need. In terms of October, we are continuing to move forward with... In terms of October, we are continuing to move forward with curriculum writing and also with our scope and sequence project with regard to technology. In our strategic plan, last year, we talked about the need to really make sure that we looked, uh, a great deal at what we're doing with regard to our curriculum. And so, we have been working quite a bit to create, um, our, our new curriculum. What we'd like to do when this process is all done is to be able to spell out for every parent across the district what it is that we are teaching, when are we teaching it, and how we're teaching it. And this would be placed online so that any parent can go on and see exactly what their child is learning at any time. Uh, we have started, uh, right now, this year, in the area of mathematics. Our goal afterwards is to move into ELA, Science and Social Studies. So, at this point, what we've done is we've created the template that we'll have online. And now, we'll begin, I believe the date is October 21st, to bring our staff together and to begin to look at math and to spell out our curriculum. With regard to the technology piece, that is also a piece that's illustrated in our strategic plan. And what we wanted to do with all of the changes that are happening with technology, we want to make sure that our students truly are where they need to be with regard to technology, and that we're using technology to leverage the outcomes of our students, uh, with regard to academics. And so, what we're doing is we're also in the process of creating the scope and sequence around technology. What do we teach with regard to technology, when do we teach it, and how do we teach it? Okay? So, that work has already begun. Uh, Barb Harold, who was here earlier, uh, tonight, uh, she has a team of teachers who are working with her, and, uh, also some, uh, BOSI's facilitators who are helping our staff. And we are now creating that, that piece too. Two really big items that are occurring, uh, simultaneously, and we'll continue to come back and share, uh, progress as we continue to move, to move forward with it. Okay, with regard to our strategic plan, uh, we'd also like to let you know that we recently, uh, brought back together all of our stakeholders. As you know, we had thirty-six stakeholders from the community that worked with us to create the strategic plan, and they were all back with us on the 28th. Uh, and during our first meeting of the year, we, uh, formed subcommittees for, uh, the, the plan, and then, uh, set meeting dates. And so, now the teams are, the committees are, are now moving on the different items in the plan. And, and if anyone needs a reminder of what's in the plan, the plan is online, it's on our website, very comprehensive, and it's, you can just click right on the strategic plan website piece and you'll see. And so, we've now organized ourselves into subcommittees, and we're really working hard on each of those pieces. The team will, by the way, be coming back. One of the things we didn't want to do when we created the strategic plan was just come together with thirty-six people from the entire community and just create a plan and have it as a document that no one uses or looks at. We really wanted to make sure that we, um, looked, uh, heavily at each of the pieces identified, and then each year, throughout the year, we'll continue to come back to see how we're doing with regard to progress. So, the team will be reconvening, reconvening in February, and we'll look at progress, and also at the end of the year, we'll also be reconvening to see how we're doing with regard to the goals that have been set in the plan. Now, with regard to our efficiency study, let me first make sure that, that we're clear. I want to make sure that everybody knows that all of the information on this efficiency study, uh, is posted on our website. Not only is the information on the website, uh, but videos are also posted of every meeting that has happened from the beginning to the end. Uh, we also recently put out a comprehensive newsletter, uh, that shares all of the things that we've learned from the beginning to the end, to, to where we're at right now with regard to the study. And as we gain more information, we'll continue to post there. Uh, we've sent out e-blasts so people can see different things. Um, and so, as the e-blasts come, we, we certainly ask and invite folks to, to really look at that. And the newsletter, a great place and resource to be able to find information. Our last couple of newsletters, you'll see lots of information in those newsletters. So, we certainly welcome people to, and invite people to go and look. On, on our website, there is a comprehensive link that you can click on, you'll see things there. We held, uh, board, as you all know, our focus group last Saturday, over at the middle school, uh, had a great group of people who came together, who sat and listened and talked with one another, um, from eight-thirty until two-thirty, um, and quite a few people, uh, were there. The groups, uh, all did a, a number of things. First of all, in terms of process, they identified, they looked at each of the different scenarios, uh, in the SE, the SES portion of the study. And they looked at each scenario, and they identified a couple of things. First, they identified challenges, and then they identified opportunities with each of the scenarios. And then, after doing that, uh, having discussion, the entire group then ranked, um, they put things in order in terms of what they would see as most desirable from what they would see as not so desirable in the district. Um, and so, they spent time ranking, uh, looking at opportunities, looking at challenges. Now, on October 20th, uh, which is at our next meeting, Dr. Saversky will be back with Bill, excuse me, with Doug Exley, and they will come and share, uh, what the focus group, um, their full outcome was. So, they'll be sharing that, they'll be sharing a report. And information around the focus group also posted onto our website. So, we invite people to certainly go look and to see all of the information, uh, that is there. So, speaking of the study, uh, just a couple of things that are upcoming in terms of activities. I want to make sure that the board understands that we are, uh, trying to get as much information out as we can. Uh, I have, over the last two weeks, been meeting with different groups of the staff, and I'll continue to do that to make sure that our staff understands, but also our parents as well. I've been working with our PTO presidents, and we're trying to, at this time, organize and solidify a meeting for October 17th, uh, with our PTO groups. And the goal is to, again, share information about the study, uh, and to, uh, make sure that people know what's happening. We'll also be taking some tours on that night. So, if people are interested in coming, please, you're more than welcome. Um, Trish, uh, from, uh, Freewill, and Robin, I believe is her name, from OPOE, are helping me with organizing that meeting, October 17th. Our goal is to also have some childcare there and some food so that people can kind of have a night with us to, uh, just understand, uh, the study. Uh, the purpose of the parent meetings, that meeting, uh, we're, we're still trying to get the time, but we believe it'll be about six, six-thirty on that night. So, we'll, we'll let you know very shortly. And we'll send that out by e-blast to the entire community so that people know as well. Uh, the purpose of the meetings with the staff and the purpose of the meetings with our community is to provide additional information. Our goal is to make sure that people know what's happening. And sometimes, when you have discourse where you can talk back and forth and have discussion, um, you know, that helps people to understand the information. So, we're just really trying to be proactive and make sure that people know, uh, what is, is happening, basically. Uh, and we'll continue to also, as I said, meet with our instructional staff. Uh, I've been doing tours and meeting with staff, and I'll continue to do so. Shifting gears a little bit now in terms of the lead testing. At our last meeting, I came and shared with you about the updated regulations around lead testing. We're moving ahead with our less, our lead testing. Um, once all of the different sites have been tested, it takes us at least between thirty to sixty days to get the results back. Because all of the districts now and across the state are doing this testing, it might take us a little bit more than that. So, as soon as we get the results back, please know that we'll, uh, share the updated information in, in public session, and we'll continue to also post that information online. If you go to our website, you will see information about that as well, right on the website. You'll see all of those, those details there. Also want to shift here a little bit and talk about NISCUS. So, last week, we had the New York State Superintendent for School, uh, Council for School Superintendent's Conference. I did have to get back a little bit early because of the loss of one of our students in our district. But at the conference, um, the commissioner talked about the Common Core. Uh, what we've learned is that there are gonna be some changes to both ELA and mathematics around the Common Core. Lot of community members, lots of people from across the whole state have been working with the commissioner around the Common Core standards. And it looks like there'll be quite a bit of reboot over the next couple of months. Uh, and so, we're gonna be waiting to hear what those changes will be, and once we receive them, we'll be sharing them not only with you, board, but with the entire community. Um, there'll be some changes and also some, there was a lot of discussion around the new Elementary and Secondary Act that was recently approved by the federal government. Um, this is, it used to be, we had, we had, uh, an act out called the No Child Left Behind. This is now the new act that's been put into place, and we're still trying to understand each of those pieces, and the commissioner did spend time talking about, uh, some of those changes there. Um, and then, um, in terms of workshops, there were some really great workshops offered for districts around capital projects, the bidding processes, superintendent spent a lot of time around those, and then innovative approaches that we can use to continue to meet the needs of our students. Okay, so, um, make sure I have the, all right. So, we have a couple of things, um, also, board, that I'm gonna, uh, ask for, just, uh, in terms of board business tonight. On the agenda, you'll see some things with regard to policies, and I'll certainly let Carrie talk about policies when we get there. Um, and you'll see also a piece about the tax assessment litigation. At our last meeting, we, we talked about, um, the resolution that would be needed for us to be, be able to work closely with Ontario and Walworth around, uh, the tax assessment piece that involves, um, a particular property that is, uh, actually, um, uh, appealing their assessment. Okay? So, we, we have a resolution tonight, um, that we'd like for you to approve. In terms of the consent agenda, we have a personnel item. We have an ESOL teacher who is resigning to go and work at a different district. Um, we, uh, tonight asked that you approve the hire of a food service, uh, helper at the high school who will be replacing a recent recognition, or, excuse me, resignation. Um, and then, tonight, we'd like to tenure, um, one of our special education teachers. And then, we would like to hire, uh, substitutes. We always need substitutes. We never know when people are gonna be out, so we want to make sure that, that we have enough subs. So, we'll be asking for your approval with regard to that. And with that, if, if there are any questions, we'll take questions now, board? Any questions? All right. So, that's my report for the night. Thank you.
All right, now the board will move through the action items listed on our agenda. I need a motion to approve the second reading of policies, sixteen-eleven, thirty-two-ten, thirty-two-twenty, sixty-two-fifteen, and seventy-six-sixteen. Dennis, second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I also need a motion to approve the tax assessment litigation resolution. Matt, second. Dennis, any discussion? Would you search about that? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move through the following, uh, approval for the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Pam, second. Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now, I'd like to have committee reports, uh, audit committee. Matt?
That's it. October 13th in the district office, five-thirty PM.
Policy, Carrie?
Hello. Tonight, we had our policy meeting at five o'clock. It was in the district office conference room. This month's policies that we were reviewing were policy fifty-six-eighty-one, school safety, fifty-six-eighty-three, fire drills, bomb threats, and bus emergency drills, and a new policy, policy seventy-five-fifty-two, student gender identity. Um, the changes that are being proposed on fifty-six-eighty-one and fifty-six-eighty-three are just updated regulations from New York State. Um, for those of you who are, um, unfamiliar with district policy, um, most of the policies, um, that we get come from either the federal government, New York State, or our Erie-Bosie's consortium. It's not, um, a group of us sitting here who just sit here and make up district policy. We get them. They're, they're laws that come down from the federal government and the state government. So, we make sure that our policies that are implemented within the district are, um, coinciding with, um, state and federal law. So, fifty-six-eighty-one and fifty-six-eighty-three are just new regulations and language updates to coincide with the state regulations. And policy seventy-five-fifty-two is actually the new student gender identity, um, policy that is coming down from the federal government. So, these are going to go into first reading for our next, um, board meeting on October 20th. And we also discussed, um, I don't have the policy number in front of us. We had updated a policy last year, and one of the pieces to the policy was whether we put, um, Narcan, for those of you who are familiar with that, into the policy. At that point, we hadn't put that piece in to be administered in the schools, but now, with some training in different language, um, as a district, we will move forward to looking to put that language into our policy moving forward. Um, so that will be also going into a first read for our next meeting. Next policy meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 3rd at six o'clock in the district office conference room. That's all I have.
Okay, it seems we adapted a little before. I'm gonna adapt again. Usually, it's board president comment, but I'm gonna make it board president, or vice president comment so Phil can finish.
All right, thank you. Back online here. Um, I had an opportunity to attend the, um, the first safety committee meeting of the year, and, uh, there are some new software programs coming that are gonna be implemented by the district. Uh, we've had briefings on those, we've been over those in past board meetings. But, um, just wanted to make sure the board is aware that those are, um, in the process, they are moving forward, and, uh, I've talked to the superintendent regarding those. That is still, um, we're working on the implementation, and it's coming, and as we progress, uh, Dr. Calvin will update us more on that process. But that is continuing to move. Um, I also was able to take part in one of the safety drills, and I was extremely impressed with not only the staff, the staff always impresses me, but also what I was very impressed with was the students. The students knew what to do, they knew where to go, and, um, unfortunately, as I commented afterwards, it's actually kind of a sad state that that's where we are. Nonetheless, not only were the staff locked on, but the students also were. So, it was, um, very impressive to see. Um, I also was part of this, this week, or, excuse me, last week, I went to the first, um, board of directors meeting for the Four Counties School Board. Um, they are looking for some topics of discussion and some presentations for the general meeting in January and March. Uh, there are some possibilities that they're, um, kicking around right now, one of which is what works, which would be other districts coming in and talking about what they've done and what has worked for them. Uh, on a number of different topics, typically, it's on student learning, um, a couple of other topics that they're discussing, but they are looking for more suggestions. So, if anybody from the board has some ideas for the Four Counties School Board, that would be appreciated. Um, and although it was a board of directors meeting, anybody is welcome, anybody on the board is welcome to come with me. I'm only the representative, which means I'm the voter, but any, any board member can come and attend those meetings. So, please feel free. Um, we also talked a little bit about the Rules, Rural Schools Association. Uh, we are part of that, and I discussed a little of the advantages of that membership with, um, the superintendent this week as well. Um, and, and for the board, I know that this has even been kicked around with us. We had in the past talked about that required fiscal training that as, as a board, we're all required to take. Um, there were very few new board members across the Four Counties School Board Association this year. So, they did the, the new member orientation. However, they're talking about, and they're looking for interest in, is there interest in, from current board members that have already done that fiscal training one-point-oh, if you will, that requirement? They're looking at doing a two-point-oh, where it would be kind of an advanced fiscal, fiscal training. So, again, that would be through the Four Counties School Board Association, and if there's any interest in that, please let me know, because they, they, they really think there's a lot of interest, and I know on our board, we have talked about that. And last, I also was, um, at the Region Two, uh, I was the representative, I should say, for Region Two, for Area Two, for the proposed resolutions discussion. Uh, I am, have, will be the New York State, uh, or at the New York State School Board Association meeting at the NISBA conference that we're going to in Buffalo. And this discussion was going over the, although I don't remember at the time, I think there's forty-four resolutions and proposals that they are putting in place for legislation, legislation. Um, there are a couple, and I, that we, um, probably that I want to make you aware of. Two of the biggest are, um, regarding the, the amount of members that need to be present at the conference in order to actually pass these resolutions. So, let me first start by saying that NISBA has agreed to all forty-four. There were about twenty that we also went over that they did not agree with, and those aren't necessarily going to be proposed, although from what I understand, at the conference in Buffalo, anything can happen. It seems to be a little wild. Um, but of the forty-four that they know are going to be presented, they do support them all. One of them was how many members need to be present in order to actually have a quorum. Uh, we know the rules for us is we need five of nine. It's pretty easy math there. You gotta have more than fifty percent. Uh, that's not true for a quorum for the NISBA meeting that I'll be attending. It's actually thirty-three percent. Somebody has a resolution up that says it can actually be as, there is no minimum. So, of the, again, my note- So of the, I think in my notes here, I think there's about 700 representatives. What they are proposing is that there is no minimum for a quorum. So if I have something very controversial, I can introduce it at the very end of the meeting. And if there's only two of 700 members there, and those two people voted in, it actually passes. So that is actually being disagreed with. And I want to make sure that the board, since I will be speaking on your behalf, that was one of the ones that I also disagreed with. I think that 33% is the current number, and I think that's as low as I'd be willing to go. So just want to make sure, does everyone agree with that? Because that was, they expect that to be quite a controversy. It is the Saturday when we're at Buffalo. I don't remember the date. That's the main one. I will send out the list of resolutions so you can read it. The packet is extremely long. Like I said, there's something like 60 of them. I'll make sure that gets forwarded to the entire board. But that really is the only one that I wanted to make sure that I had the board's agreement on. Okay, thank you.
All right, we always, we give everybody a chance to talk. Carrie had something else.
Sorry. I am also the Board of Education's liaison for the Wellness Committee within the district. So I just wanted to pass along some information of some upcoming events that will be for the community. We had our first meeting of the year this past Monday. And the big event that the Wellness Committee will be looking to do this year is the Relay for Life. And we are looking, right now, we are tentatively looking for Friday, June 2nd, with possibly a rain date of June 3rd. We're just getting dates down. It will be an entire Wayne community event. So family, students, teachers. So just kind of put that date on your calendar for now. More information will definitely be coming. So please just, you know, look to participate however you can, but just please just keep that in the back of your mind. There's another event that is being kicked off this year too. And I believe it is tentatively scheduled for Friday, November 4th, but the backup date is November 5th, depending on whether Wayne, Clyde, or Lions make the sectional finals for football. And what it's going to be is a coaches versus cancer basketball game. And it is past and present coaches from Wayne playing against past and present coaches from a combined Clyde and Lions team. So that is scheduled, I'm sorry, I'm reading here. Yep, November 4th. So, and all the proceeds from that event as well are going to be coming from the American Cancer Society. So they're both family-friendly events. So please, you know, if you're interested, just, there'll be some fun activities going on. And Marty Malasani, who's one of the health teachers, is coordinating, has been the main contact through the Wellness Committee for that event. And it should be an exciting time. So it's kind of a great way to kind of pop over to the high school that night and just have some fun and for a really good cause. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will have a few comments tonight. If you've watched any of the past meetings, I have any comments because we haven't anybody here. So I would like to thank everybody for coming. We do value your input. I'm a little perplexed that people didn't have the information. A lot of the information, we've been very transparent, we've been involved in a lot of things. Everybody up here has been in, either graduated from school, has kids in the school. We all have the kids' best interest in mind. And all our decisions we make are in the best interest of the kids. So, I mean, the strategic planning, we do focus on the education. We've had a lot of the meetings now focusing on educational presentations and that to see what's best for our kids. And we're just trying to move forward and look at the best way to do that. So again, if you really liked tonight's meeting, keep coming back. We'd like the input, we'd like to see people here. If you can't, you can go back and watch any of our meetings for the past four years now and on YouTube, whatever, you can get any one of those. All of our fiscal stuff is online, everything's transparent. You can see everything you want to see. All you gotta do is look for it. If you can't find it, just ask and we'll make sure that we make it available. So again, thank you for coming. If we have any students here that need their papers signed for soul studies, you could come up and any one of the board members can sign it. We will be going into an executive session to discuss particular students, staff member, and security. And then we will come back to adjourn, but we don't anticipate any action to be happening after the, our executive session. So there wouldn't be any reason to stick around. Thank you. Going to executive session. Pam, second. Jeremy? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming.